Hi everyone, welcome to Chamber Chatter Live. This is our candidate series. We were off a couple of weeks, but excited to be back with you. And today we have Mayor John Palmer, who is running for reelection, so welcome.
Glad to be here Tara and Luke.
Yeah, we're very excited. And of course, our co-hosts, well introduce yourself.
I'm Bill Corman with Bill Corman's Puyallup Nissan. I'm also the Chair of the Political Affairs Committee here at the Puyallup Sumner Chamber Commerce.
And for those of you who don't know, my name is Tara Doyle and I think I am the CEO of the Puyallup Sumner Chamber and loving every minute of this job. So, let's dive right in and get to know Mayor Palmer a little bit more. So, congratulations on your decision to run again. Can you tell us a little bit about what compelled that decision?
Sure. You know, I've been involved in the city of Puyallup now for 10 years. Four years on the planning commission and then two terms on council. So, I've been in it.
You've been involved.
It's been really fun in some ways, but just to watch the city grow and to be part of the direction of Puyallup. So, I enjoy that process. I have a lot of passion for what we want to become and maintain and you know, a whole bunch of different projects, keeping our community safe and then building up the assets within our community for all the families and everybody to enjoy. So, that's what keeps me going, that's why I love doing what I do here.
Terrific. It looks like we have Kyle Hartke, one of our board members that has logged in. Hi Kyle, thanks for joining us. We've got Puyallup Sumner Chamber staff watching as well, we love it. So, tell us what some of the more, I guess, prominent accomplishments you feel you've had in your term as City Council and Mayor.
Love to do that, love to do that. So, when I set out to do my first campaign, I kind of focused on four broad areas. And first is public safety, that's kind of job one, I think, in our community, we care about that a lot. Second is building our community and third is smart development. And fourth is just responsible government. So, on those areas, I think, on public safety, we've made a lot of progress in the last few years and I feel really proud about that. We did a staffing study to look at what we needed to do in our police department and so that really helped guide us. And so, we ended up hiring 10 police officers. We have a new police chief for the last couple of years and updated the contract and that has made a difference. Crime rates are down in 2018, so we'd like to see those trends continue. And so, that investment, I think, is kind of one big accomplishment and look forward to continuing to improve on that front. Building our community has been a passion of mine, as probably most people know, particularly in Parks and Recreation area. Really, you know, just this last couple of months, you know, we put in our new turf fields, so I've worked on that for years to get that to happen. So, Phase 1 is open now and Phase 2 is going to be completed this year. So, we're going to have a brand-new sports complex, AstroTurf, that's going to operate all year round and that's going to be a great asset for our community and a great economic driver as well. And the new Van Miller Park opened up last week and that's a treasure and that's connected with Step by Step, connected to the Foothills Trail, so, and just preserving some of our heritage. And that's just a wonderful asset for the community and I've worked on that for years, so it's really, love to see that, you know, all that time spent to get that.
Coming to fruition, right?
It's really exciting. More on that front, we opened up a Puyallup Loop Trail last year, which I think is really cool. It goes around town and connects some natural areas together and it's just a great thing to do, go out for an hour and a half to do a nice walk in our community. And one of the most recent things I'm working on is connecting the trail between Puyallup and Sumner, Puyallup and Tacoma.
Yep.
And that has been the dream of many for years, to do that, to have a continuous trail from Tacoma all the way up to Mount Rainier. And it connects our community now with the waterfront in Tacoma.
Yeah.
Or downtown.
Yep.
Or, you know, when we get the new train coming in. That's just, so this part of this trail is going to be not only a recreational treasure, but it's going to be a commuting thing as we go forward.
Hey, I live in Tacoma and would be happy to bike towards.
Yes, exactly.
Have that option, yeah, definitely.
So, we have a few other people tuning in. We have Sharla Newman.
Hi Sharla.
Hi Sharla.
Patty Denny and Kevin Enlow, so thanks for watching.
Great, we got Sharla and Patty also board members. Sharla is one of our City Council candidates for Sumner. We look forward to having her on next Thursday, the 18th. And hi Kevin, over with Value Village, love partnering, he's such a great champion for the community. They're saying hi back.
Yes, they are. So, I guess, some of the, the next question here, we have, is there any unfinished business you're looking to continue into this next term?
Yeah, I think, you know, the first thing is the public safety building. That is a big lift for our community, it's something we definitely need. Our police station over there is just, you know, crumbling and it's fairly old. And our court is in a facility that's not designed to be a court.
Right.
And so, we spent all this year kind of looking at those designs up on the South Hill. But, and we wanted to go out for a bond in November, but we're not quite ready. And last night, actually, we decided on the number of things that we needed to do for the rest of this year to get ready to go out for a bond next year. So, we're not quite ready, I think that when we go out, we want to have all our ducks in the line, be really prepared and to educate the public on what this is going to entail. Because it's a big decision for us and we need to get it right, so that's a big thing moving forward.
I don't think anyone would frown upon public safety being a priority for you and the strides you're making in those areas are great. Sort of tied to public safety, homelessness is something that, you know, segues into that conversation and is also, you know, polling data would say is one of the most prevalent subjects on voters' minds. What types of things have you done in office and do you hope to maybe implement going forward?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll continue to address this issue and make progress. So, a couple of things on homeless. The first thing is, what gets all the attention with homeless right now is kind of the individuals on the street, what people see.
Yeah.
That's actually only a piece of homeless, right? Family homeless is more prevalent in our community. And Puyallup actually spend, we spend $100,000, we give to Helping Hand House to get people into hotels and then transitional housing. So, we spend a fair amount of energy on family homeless, which is really important. We've done that for a long time. Now, the individuals is a tricky problem. And our approach, my approach, and I think our approach is, safety first. So, we need to protect the community and we've taken strong positions on that. In terms of, you know, not allowing just camps set up anywhere, in terms of we hired a library guard, we have a park ranger. So, we're doing things to make people feel safe in our community. And we've had some regulations that we put in place for the New Hope Center and for future shelters or those type of things. So, that's been the first, right, protect the community. Second is, we do need to figure out how we get them off the street and how we get help, get them help. And we just launched, actually, a program where we are, have the police out in the field and they're taking, they're trying to get people into a shelter that we contracted with Salvation Army in Tacoma. And we don't have shelters here right now, maybe we will in the future, but right now we don't. And the shelters that we have in the county, they're all in Tacoma.
Right.
And we paid into those shelters and they've always intended to serve the county wide. So, we're taking advantage of that opportunity. So, that's the second prong, is how do you get people into shelter and into treatment? And it's, some of these people, it takes intervention. And I think we'll continue to do that, you need to have a strong hand out there in the field to get them into. So, I think the combination of protecting the community and then working on ways that get people into shelter and treatment that doesn't exacerbate the problem.
Yeah.
That's been a big trip, because, you know, Seattle's had problems, they'll spend money, but then it attracts people and it's like, you're a vicious circle. And so, we don't want to make those mistakes, we want to make the right investments that actually solve the problem.
I'm happy to hear you say that. And you're right, there's enough eyes, this issue certainly has been elevated enough, I think we have the right agencies on it and it's, the creative solutions that I'm hearing in our community are encouraging, so that's good.
So, we have a couple of questions. One one's from Kyle Hartke. It talked about encouraging, so it says, what is the top priority within the city to encourage economic viability and support business growth?
Excellent. So, actually, this gets into one of my other unfinished business.
Yes.
And that is our downtown redevelopment in particular. I'm really excited about that. I think there's so much opportunity for downtown Puyallup. And what it's zoned for is for increasing housing and density, for people to live and to, you know, live in our wonderful downtown area and be less dependent on the car, use transit. And that's just going to make things more vibrant in our town. That's going to, you know, create more businesses downtown, there'll be more demand. And so, we've done a number of things to incentivize that type of development. And in terms of doing some expedited permit stuff to get that out of the way, lower the cost for that type of investment, I think we are just now on the verge of that happening. The price point, you know, you see that happening in regional centers like Kent and of course in Tacoma, that's happening and of course, big time in Seattle.
Right.
But I think Puyallup is now at the point where we're going to see some of that. And so, the key is to have that happen in a way that people like, people enjoy and just build a more prosperous, vibrant downtown.
Yeah, and I think the city of Puyallup as a whole, you know, investing in a outside consulting firm to really kind of look at, you know, talk to community leaders, business leaders, residents, all about what their vision is. I know a lot of their sort of recommendations have come to fruition and are starting to kind of be put towards City Council and see what, you know, can be implemented. The Chamber was certainly happy to be identified as a key partner on many of those economic development strategies. So, I think, again, you're asking the right questions, you went to the right people, it looks like some good concrete plans, so that's, again, very encouraging.
That's great.
Motion and collaboration with our Chamber, which of course, we like to see.
We're glad about that, you know, we put, we'll be finalizing that plan, it creates a blueprint. And it's, it's all of us working together, right? I mean, the city can do its part and then we partner with like the Chamber and others to kind of make this happen.
Yeah.
And that's really how to make it happen.
Yeah, awesome, I see some other questions.
Yes, this one here is, it says from Gary Wyatt, so it says, how would you put Puyallup in a better light than Matt Driscoll from the News Tribune?
Matt, we're going to have to have him on a live blog.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think what Matt is responding to is, there, I mean, obviously, there's a part of Puyallup that is very vocal about some of the issues around New Hope. And because they're individually impacted and so, there's social media that goes with that and Matt has a certain perspective.
Yeah.
And so, I think he's taking on some of those issues. You know, I do think we need to calm down both sides of that kind of pointing.
Right.
In terms, we need solutions.
Right.
And we're not going to get to solution, the solutions that we're doing.
Right.
Let's talk about what we're doing, let's talk about what the pilot that we're doing, let's see how well that works. And let's talk about specific ideas and proposals to make this problem better. If we're just, you know, pointing and talking and accusing each other, it's not going to help. So, that's my focus and so, that's how I say that to Matt too.
Well, and we're pretty protective of our Puyallup.
That's right.
Area, so I get that, so thanks for that question. We also have Justin Camerata watching, hi Justin, he's one of the Port Commissioner candidates, so thanks for tuning in today. So, tell us a little bit more about, you know, what do you do for fun, what's your home life look like?
Oh, let's see, well, I'm kind of an outdoor person, I mean, that goes along with some of the work that I've been doing. You know, I love to ski in the winter when it's cloudy around here and get out in the summer and enjoy, enjoy our trails, go hiking, go boating. So, a lot of outdoor activities and then just relaxing, you know, I'm pretty busy, so give me a beach.
Especially so with the campaign underway, I imagine.
That's right.
Are you outdoor bowling?
We're just beginning, you know, without a primary, kind of, I don't want, you know, be too early.
Yep.
So, people are, in terms of the general, are not quite paying attention yet, so, but just a little bit, you know.
Yep, it's important to get face-to-face out there and hear what some of those issues are at the door.
That's right.
Absolutely.
So, leadership style, you're the mayor, you've been on the council the longest, correct?
That's right.
So, what is your leadership style?
My, I would say fairly collaborative. That's kind of my first thing, is let's, let's work together, let's vet the issues, very thoughtful. I think, you know, people will say that about me, analytical and try to dissect the issues, try to not do knee-jerk reactions and that kind of thing. So, that's kind of my focus, you know, sit down and try to figure things out. And I think that's why I've been supported to be Deputy Mayor and then Mayor. I think my fellow council members, you know, see that and, you know, when I'm running a meeting, you know, I try to be pretty friendly, pretty balanced about things.
Yeah.
And pretty informative too.
We've got some commotion going on over here with some dogs in our real estate.
That's right.
I love dogs.
You never know what's going to happen.
The dogs are chiming in next door. Looks like Patty Denny has a question as well.
Yes, so she heard a question, she's had this for every single candidate.
Yes.
Or current.
Expected.
City council member. What are your thoughts on property rights, the Knutson property she highlights?
Oh, okay, so that's, you know, that's a tough project within our, within our community. So, in terms of property rights, absolutely believe in property rights, but they're not absolute, they're also tempered by, you know, the impacts on the community.
Right.
And that's, that's the balance and that's one of what we're dealing with in this situation. You know, there's a lot of history in this situation. We developed a land use plan in 2008 with the landowners and the county and we adopted that plan, this is part of our urban growth area. And so, what is proposed out there is just completely inconsistent with that plan, which is a little frustrating. And then, because it's all warehouses. And our plan was for a mixed type of develop, some warehouses, some business park, we really wanted to see more of a business park out there and then some open space as well, so kind of a mix, which I thought was a really good plan. And so, it's, in my view, it's unfortunate that there's a proposal that's pretty counter to that.
Right.
But the big problem is the number of trucks that are associated with the project. That plus the warehouse there is about 2,000 trucks per day on Tushaw Road and East Main Pioneer. And our traffic modeling is saying that's, that's going to make these intersections go to F, they're going to fail.
Yeah, yep.
And I, that's a big problem.
Right.
It's already a heavy commuter route and you add that on top of that, so that is the number one issue and that is why we've been trying to figure out how to mitigate that and we haven't reached that. And so, we just actually, there's been, you know, court battles on this unfortunately and we won called jurisdiction and we will be doing environmental impact statement to address those impacts. And so, it's not about stopping it, it's about the scale and making sure that the impacts aren't overwhelming to our community.
Right.
And that's, and that's a, that's not just, that's a business thing too. I mean, that's, that's, you know, people don't want jammed-up roads for our community and so, that's the balance that we're trying to reach.
And so, speaking of environmental issues, you have a day job?
I do.
Would you, I don't know if everybody knows what your day job is, so maybe you can explain to folks what you're busy with.
So, I have worked for the Environmental Protection Agency up in Seattle for quite a lot, over 30 years. And I focus primarily on water quality and salmon and orchid protection, so trying to rebuild our salmon runs across the Pacific Northwest and work with states and tribe and all sorts of different programs to do that over the years. And so, I enjoy doing that.
Yep.
And so, that's what I do in the day hours.
Okay.
Got one question up here from George. How will the city help citizens trying to age in place? Utilities and taxes are going up every year.
Well, the good thing is that, you know, we've kept our taxes low. We don't increase our property taxes and we'll have a billion dollar tax.
Right.
So, the one thing that does go up is the utilities.
Right.
And that's, that's a challenge and that, that just goes up with inflation.
Right.
Right, and that's because the cost of rebuilding our pipes and, you know, fixing all that infrastructure that goes with our water and sewer isn't cheap. And so, and there's a whole lot of list of things that have to be done. So, we kept a lid on that, but it's just grown with inflation and that's, you know, it's like running a business, that's kind of what we need to do. If you, if you cut that.
Yeah.
Then you're going to, you're going to have problems with, you know, your facilities will begin to deteriorate over time and you're going to have problems with your water supply, problems with your sewer, wastewater treatment plant, that sort of thing. So, it's the business part of the city that we just try to keep it as low as we can.
Yeah.
But run, run those facilities as well, as well.
Right.
Is there anything, is it, I think, how they help the citizens, I guess, is that, is there?
Well, in terms of the citizens, you know, we do have some programs for senior citizens that in terms of paying their utility bills to try to make that easier, so we do have some programs in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, our community definitely has an active senior.
Absolutely, that's right.
Fantastic facilities popping up everywhere. We're doing a ribbon cutting at, next week at Broadley Park, so excited about that, Wesley Homes at Broadley Park.
That's right, we have quite a few of those going in.
Yeah, all over, it's exciting, great, great community and I think that if there are issues of that population, they're definitely a growing population, so, you know, I don't know what City Council currently has done to, to try to, I guess, speak to this community at large, but potentially this question here may be, you know, the beginning of starting some sort of active dialogue where there is a good understanding of what issues they're facing. Again, they're a pretty significant part of our population and would like to know and understand what their issues are.
We actually, we actually were the first city in Washington to become a age-friendly city.
Good.
And so, we adopted that.
What does that mean?
What that means is that we've worked with, to put together some plans in terms of what do seniors in particular, what do they need in our community? And looking across transportation issues, health issues, what can we do as a city to make life, you know, easier for them?
Yeah.
Because they have some unique, you know, needs and interests, different than the regular public and so, we need, how do we address that?
Yeah.
As a city across everything that we do. So, we're in the process of developing that plan. I don't like plans for plans, but you know, let's, you know, a lot of that, they, in terms of walkable, livable communities.
Right.
That's very important, what I hear from the seniors and then affordability is a big deal. And so, building the supply of housing is, just increasing the supply is a way to obviously address price, because you're keeping, keeping a lid on the price if your supply's out of it.
I would like to, I guess there's one more topic that, that I sort of hear often here in the Chamber and that would be just the permitting process. And I feel that since we've been, you know, had change of leadership here in the last six months, I've observed new policies and processes in place, I've definitely had an active role with a lot of the leadership at City of Puyallup, including your city planner, Tom Utterback. Everybody seems pretty laser-focused on improving that system, they don't want to be known as a city that has a poor permitting process, but I'd say we've just started to get there, but I'm, it's, it's still an issue and I would be very curious to know if, if with this new economic development plan, if there are ideas of opening up, I guess, less-impact fees, opening up to different types of zoning that are kind of those mixed-use zones. What are your personal feelings on that and then what do you know is sort of forecasted so that maybe we could let folks who aren't watching this as closely know that Puyallup is open for business and would like to be helpful to that process, not hurtful to that process?
Absolutely, and we, and we have tackled this head-on, because we want to have a more streamlined permitting process that's predictable. Because the thing I hear more than anything is, is the unpredictability of it.
Right.
So, have something, have an application in, I'm not hearing back, not sure when it's going to hear back, what's that do-loop? So, we've, we've done a number of things, we've really put a focus on permitting. So, we've actually applied lean to that process and we're doing that right now, so it was like, the team that works on it within the city, how can they work together efficiently to move those processes quick?
Right.
And how you cut out processes that are unnecessary. So, that's very important, so just kind of that internal engineering and thinking about how you process things. We're in the process of buying a new permit software.
Right.
So, I've got the latest update on that, but that's intended to be more online and much more transparent and user-friendly.
Right.
That's the goal, so that should help in that regard. The other thing is just the dialogue, we set up, I think it's monthly, right, starting with the MBA and I think you've been invited or the Chamber in terms of just a check-in every so often, just how's it going, what are you hearing out there?
Right.
And I think that's really good feedback for our staff on just a regular ongoing business.
Yeah, led by Hans Hunger and there has been a lot of positive outcomes from that committee, so.
That's right.
That's great.
So, we have a question here, Giovanni. Hi Giovanni. Why did Mayor Palmer support, why did Mayor Palmer support the park impact fees?
Well, so, we redid the park impact fees a few years ago, they were originally done in the mid-2000s, so they were, they were a little out of date, so we wanted to up those and so, we, what, what they were is they were all kind of one level. And so, one of the things we did is we broke it into different levels. And so, the highest level is for single-family housing and that's, they can afford a little bit more. And then, we actually kept it the same for mid-range size and actually reduced it a little bit for the tinier units.
Right.
So, we scaled it, that's one of the things we did, is we scaled it. And so, that's, you know, so we revamped that and overall, it generates, you know, some more revenue for the city and that's, we're putting that right into those projects that I've talked about. And so, that's helping to spur economic activity and so, I think it's a overall workable program.
Right. Great. Well, is, was there another question?
I think it was just Sharla, just thanking us for pursuing the online permitting, creating efficiencies and extremely helpful for business of all sizes, so, you're welcome Sharla.
Yes, thank you for that comment. So, a little bit of breaking news occurred and so, I guess we'd be remiss not to just ask you a little bit about, you've just had a recent departure of our city manager.
That's true.
So, I assume there's probably an official public comment or what, what can you tell us about that?
He, so, Kevin resigned at the beginning of this month and just last night, we agreed to the terms of the separation agreement.
Okay.
And I just say that, you know, Kevin has been with the city a long, a little over 10 years, I think, as, as a staff attorney and city attorney and then the city manager. So, he's devoted a lot of time and attention and done a lot of good work for our city.
Yep.
Has hired, I think, a really good group of directors.
Yep.
And so, he's done a really good job of paying attention to the organization, I've, you know, worked very closely with him. So, I just, I wish him nothing but the best.
Yep.
As he moves forward and he'll move forward, I think he'll be successful and then we'll move forward and be successful.
Great.
So, that's where we're going.
Terrific. Well, breaking news. So, any last words just on your campaign, anything you'd like people to know when they associate, you know, John Palmer and they've got that option on a ballot, not until the general, but, you know, what, what should they know about you? What would be, I guess, more of the distinguishing differences between your opponent and you?
Well, I think they, I mean, they know, you're getting experienced leadership, right? I know this city really well.
Right.
From all the services I've done and investment and time and just getting to know people, working with people and accomplishing projects. So, they know that I'm going to, you know, continue to do that.
Correct.
And, and that's what they're going to get and I got, and I will continue to build on successes and I, you know, I'll focus on my campaign and my message in terms of building our community, you know, smart growth, public safety, tackling our homeless situation. I'll focus on my message, I do that in a very non-partisan way. This is a non-partisan position.
Correct.
I like to work with, you know, we have non-partisan issues, right? City issues, we care about these issues, we all care about them. And so, I just like to keep that kind, we have enough of that at the national level.
Yes.
We don't need that here.
We don't need that.
And so, that's what you get with me. So, I think leadership and perhaps, you know, partisanship are some of the distinguishing uncharacterisms between me and my opponent. I don't know a lot about his positions yet, so.
Yeah.
But that's what I'll bring.
Yeah, thanks for drawing that out. So, again, another great Chamber chatter live.